In accordance with the state sunshine law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on February 23rd, 2012 to the Hillsborough Beacon and Courier News. I need a roll call, Mr. Mahmoud.
Surely. Ms. Bogachowski?
Here.
Mr. Gillette?
Here.
Mrs. Haas?
Here.
Mrs. Haley?
Here.
Mr. Kents?
Here.
Mrs. Lay?
Here.
Mr. Pulserfer?
Here.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Here.
Mr. Padgett?
Here. Full house. All right, we're here for the purpose of going into executive session, so I'll read that motion. Whereas the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231 of the laws of 1975, provides that a public body may exclude the public from that portion of a meeting of which the public body discusses certain matters for which confidentiality is required as permitted in Section 7B of the act. Resolved by the Board of Education, the Township of Hillsborough, the County of Somerset, and the State of New Jersey as follows: The following matters to be discussed are negotiations with the Hillsborough Education Association; A student disciplinary matters related to harassment, intimidation, and bullying. The matters discussed in executive session shall be disclosed to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. I'll take a motion to that effect.
So moved.
Thank you, and a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions? We are now in executive session. We are back in public session. Can I get a roll call, Mr. Mahmoud?
Ms. Bogachowski?
Here.
Mr. Gillette?
Here.
Mrs. Haas?
Here.
Mrs. Haley?
Here.
Mr. Kents?
Here.
Mrs. Lay?
Here.
Mr. Pulserfer?
Here.
Mr. Padgett?
Here. All right, we are done with the earlier executive session, so we're going to close that meeting and open up the regular scheduled 7:30 meeting. I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No abstentions? So that meeting is closed, and we're going to move on to our 7:30 meeting. In accordance with the state sunshine law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on February 23rd, 2012 to the Hillsborough Beacon and the Courier News. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right, Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And can I get another roll call, Mr. Mahmoud?
Absolutely. Ms. Bogachowski?
Here.
Mr. Gillette?
Here.
Mrs. Haas?
Here.
Mrs. Haley?
Here.
Mr. Kents?
Here.
Mrs. Lay?
Here.
Mr. Pulserfer?
Here. Oh, sorry. Jump in the gun.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Here.
And Mr. Padgett?
Here. You've got to do it in a different voice, and then it's more believable. All right, and Mr. Pulserfer is here, though.
You didn't hear my voice from calling?
Sounds an awful lot like Mark. We have no correspondence, and we're moving on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Schiff?
Thank you, Mr. Padgett. We have a few pieces of great news that I'd like to share with the board and the public. First of all, in terms of the Hillsborough High School Model UN, Mr. Mingle, Supervisor of Social Studies in REACH, recently shared with me that the Hillsborough High School Model United Nations won Best Delegation at Duke University Model United Nations held on February 16th through the 20th. Best Delegation is the first-place award for the school with the best percentage of winning delegates. Senior Tom Kozlowski and sophomore Tom Klein won individual awards as best delegates. Senior Sri Raghavanna and Vikram Alda, Junior Amen Thakkar, and sophomores Carter Post and Sid Goshal?
Goshal.
Goshal, won outstanding delegate awards. Senior Salah Shaki and Junior Kenjal Dave won honorable mention. And Junior Daria Grastara received a verbal commendation. In the fall, many of the same students were part of the Hillsborough team that won Best Delegation at the Vanderbilt University Model United Nations. Congratulations to the entire Hillsborough team, and social studies teacher Bob Fenster, Karen Morrison, and Chris Riles, who serve as the team's advisors. Let's give them a round of applause. Next, I'm pleased to announce that we'll be launching the Genesis Parent Access Portal tonight. This new tool will help improve communication about our student progress and attendance, and will allow the school and home to work together more closely to ensure student success. Some of the features we will be rolling out eventually will enable our parents to view our student schedules, to view online report cards, to view class assignments eventually, monitor daily attendance, to print grades and attendance report, to use links to initiate emails to teachers, to view comments, and to update phone and email contacts for our parents from remote locations. We look for, we hope that you look for more information that will be sent to all of our parents through emails in the days ahead. Next is our Put It Down Initiative. This week, the Hillsborough High School students are being informed of the countywide Put It Down Initiative. Sponsored by the Somerset County Prosecutor's Office, the Somerset County Chiefs of Police, and the Somerset Medical Center, the initiative invites students to sign pledges not to drive while distracted, and not to text or call those they know to be behind the wheel. The intention of Put It Down is to raise awareness about this dangerous behavior and to save life and limb through education. The awareness program began this morning with the student body viewing a heartbreaking documentary entitled "The Last Text," which chronicles a number of families of deceased victims and survivors dealing with the repercussions of the use of a cellphone or text messaging while driving. The students also attended an assembly today where two victims of a distracted driver accident discussed what happened when the motorcycle they were riding on was struck by a driver who was texting and driving. Parents who want to sign and submit a pledge are also welcome to do so. Pledge forms are available on the high school website from February 27th through March 2nd. Students who sign the pledges will be entered into a drawing to win one of two iPads sponsored by the county organizations of this worthwhile event. And that's all I have this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Is there any questions from the public regarding the superintendent's report? All right, is there any questions from the board regarding the superintendent's report? I'll just say that this wasn't my goal when we approved the Genesis project, but I got a hug from a parent who couldn't wait to get this system into our district. She was jealous of what was going on in other districts in Montgomery and so forth, and couldn't wait to have access to schedules and everything that this is going to provide. All right, moving on to approval of minutes. All right, we're going to start with the February 13th, 2012 special meeting. I need a motion.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed and abstentions? All right, February 13th, 2012 executive session, I need a motion.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed and abstentions? All right, moving on to the February 13th, 2012 regular meeting. I need a motion.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
And opposed and abstentions? Thank you. Moving on to committee reports. Mr. Pulserfer is now on my left, so I'm going to call on him first.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. At the Human Resources Committee meeting last week, we discussed a number of items. First of all, we discussed a negotiations item, which we just discussed also in our executive session with the whole board. We discussed the teacher evaluation model and the state's changes for the performance-based evaluations. The state is behind schedule on its pilot program that we opted not to be part of last year, so Scott is keeping an eye on that and expects there to be some changes coming as the state continues to not be on schedule. We reviewed budget requests, the prioritized list, and also a list of currently not budgeted but prioritized requests from the administration. We reviewed that list. We had a initial review of the non-tenured renewal process, and we're going to continue to stay with the criteria of requiring and enthusiastically recommends from the principal to continue non-tenured staff. We had an update on the 2012-2013 CAP program. Currently, 78 families expressed interest and were sent contracts, and our current program is running with 30 students, so if we get a significant percentage of that 78, we'll definitely be moving in a positive direction with the CAP program. I believe March 9th is the deadline, somewhere around there. Yeah, the deadline for those families to commit with a deposit. And lastly, we just began the discussions of the process and timeline for the superintendent's evaluation for the year. And that was it.
And board self-evaluation. And board?
Oh, and board evaluation, sorry, yes. I thought you said you were bored.
No, never. Mr. Gillette, in operations?
Oh, yeah. Operations Committee met February 15th. We had a number of items, which I'll enumerate for you now. First, we had Mrs. Espinoza, our Transportation Director. She came in to talk about her budget items, and especially talk about two things. One, the possible suspension of one of our bus contracts, and the second item was about some of the things that she's working on to reduce costs for our transportation. So that was very, very good. And we'll have more about that as the weeks and months go ahead. Also, Mr. Frusco came in for our Buildings and Grounds Department to talk about his budget priorities. That was very interesting, and it's all detailed in the, it'll be detailed in the budget items that you'll receive if you haven't done so already. These are both the priority items and the unbudgeted priority items. He also spoke with us about two Home and School Association projects, one at Triangle School, which we've been talking about for a few months now, and a new possible project at Arton Road School out on the playground, and how the board may facilitate those projects. Let's see, we also talked about the transportation contracts. An interesting item, we received a quote from a company called File Bank. And what File Bank does is they take, they're involved with record storage. This has been a concern in our district for many years now. We have our records, including necessary confidential records and all kinds of records relating to our business operations and to students, stored in different places, both on our property and off-site. Some of them are stored in trailers at the Bloomingdale School and other places. Not only are some of these places not as secure as we'd like them to be, but also prone to weather problems, and also very difficult to find items when we need them. So the company File Bank is proposing to take all of our records, all of our boxes, all the banker's boxes, off-site, into their secure location. What they'll do is index all of our records. And then, once they're all indexed, if anybody needs a record, they know where to find it, they immediately find it, scan it, and transmit it to us electronically, you know, over the internet or wherever they do that, and we'll be able to have a record quickly and easily, and our records will be more secure. So we're going to follow up with that, and this is something that the Operations Committee has been looking into for many months, and we're glad to be near, I guess, Mr. Mahmoud, are we near completion on that, correct?
I think we are, Mr. Gillette. We're actually looking to meet with the vendor tomorrow to potentially implement it.
Very good. I like that. Do we have one other? Well, yeah, I'll mention one other. I'll mention two others, what the heck. We also, if you've been over to the middle school gymnasium any time in the past 30 years that it's been there, there are no bleachers in the gym. That's something that's sorely missing, so it looks like we're going to add bleachers to the gym. It looks like they're going to be the automatic, they come out automatically, you know, you don't have to pull them out, right? It's all electric. So that'd be something nice. And the last item is, we continued our discussion about graduation facilities. I was not at graduation in June, but I know it was indoors, and it was hot, it was overcrowded. It was not a good experience. Every year that we have graduation at our school on-site, we have that possibility that there's going to be rain and clement weather, we'll have to move inside. We've been looking at alternatives. The Operations Committee has given the superintendent the go-ahead to look for off-site alternatives for June 2013, I think is the first year. Yeah, I see Dr. Schiff nodding. June 2013 for possible off-site. It's not easy. There are not a lot of sites that immediately come to mind that are large enough. RVCC is not large enough, and some of the other sites that you would think of are not quite large enough. But there are some that are, and we're looking into that. We'll probably have a report on that, you know, in the coming months. I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Haas?
The Education Committee met on February 16th and covered a lot of material. We got an update on the FUSE pilot project at the high school, and Dr. Antounas told us everything was going very well, and there have been a lot of very engaged students and a lot of excitement in the classroom, so I want to pass that along. And we were talking about how we could possibly view this, and we're contemplating a video conference with the group of students. So that is to be looked forward to. And we also followed up on our World Language Task Force. Apparently, interviews have taken place, and there are good candidates out there for the Mandarin and Spanish positions that we would need for next year. So that is in very good shape. We talked about phasing in the Mandarin Chinese at the upper levels, and we will deal with that as soon as the elementary program is in place. We weren't able to proceed on random drug testing because of the volume of other material we were doing, but we talked about having a report on that in May, because whatever we'd be implementing would be implemented for the following year, so this way we could get the budget and the election out of the way and pay attention to that in May in time for a decision for the following year. We discussed Race for the Top. Race for the Top is $14,000, and I think now $17,000, possibility of receiving additional funds. Nobody ever sneezes at funds around here, but we sort of need to see what the reward point is, and if we have to do $170,000 worth of stuff for $17,000, we are able to decline at some point. But if the requirements are things that we would be doing anyway, we'll happily take the money. So we'll be following up. The best part of our meeting was actually a presentation by Lenore Johnston, who, as everybody knows, is our wonderful Director of Special Services, and it was a very eye-opening presentation. It was geared to discussing the budget, but I think we all had our eyes open very much about a lot of the issues that are going around in the district, and we certainly got a greater understanding of why special ed costs what it does in this district. So, you know, if anybody has any questions about that, I'm sure you've all looked at the special ed budget, and you've seen some of the, some of the numbers are just simply out of our ability to control. We don't set tuition and out-of-district placements, but, you know, our numbers are being, you know, are very reasonable for a district this size, and, you know, hopefully Mrs. Johnston can continue to do the wonderful job that she does. And there are some changes going on with VOTAC and with the ESC that are also impacting our program. There's just a lot of stuff going on. I mean, if you want to discuss it further, I would suggest having Mrs. Johnston here for a presentation, but that is, was a major part of our meeting. We also have on the agenda tonight a science curriculum for approval, and two new books, actually, one old book and one new book, and, you know, that is on the agenda for tonight. We also had a CAP program update, and we also discussed additional high-priority items that are important to the curriculum and instruction side. We've also scheduled a meeting for the Community Partnership Network on Tuesday, March 13th. Everybody put it in your calendar, and we'll be discussing the 2012-13 budget, the computer and technology visioning throughout the district, and whatever else anybody else wants to discuss. And that's basically our report.
Thank you very much. Is there any questions from the public regarding the committee reports? All right, seeing none, I'll go to the board. Mr. Gillette?
This is for Mrs. Haas. I read in your minutes about the random drug testing, and in the minutes, someone had said, well, it was written in the minutes, anyway, that you were waiting, or you would plan to receive, expect to receive, recommendation from the administration on whether to proceed with random drug testing. And it's interesting to me, because the first time around, when we implemented it, we received no considered recommendation from administration at all. So is this something good? Are you happy to receive a recommendation from administration? Is something that they, that you want to receive? I'm not sure. I don't know.
Well, in any program in the high school, particularly something like random drug testing, there are the numbers, and then there are the benefits and incidental benefits. So, you know, perfect example, not saying these are facts, but, you know, if you have one person saved from drugs because of this program, or 50 people saved from drugs, you know, there would be some that argue that either outcome is okay. I think the value of the recommendation from the administration would be to see how the entire program has been received by the school, what kind of issues have arisen that we may not have been able to anticipate, what the successes are that don't come down to a number or a particular incident, climate issues, as it were. I'm sure I'm not being articulate enough about this, but I think that, you know, it's important to hear from, you know, Karen Bingert, as well as our nursing supervisor, just to see what their issues are in implementing the program. You know, I think, I mean, we have a million questions to be answered on the subject, so that's one of them, and I think it's a valuable one, and, you know, I mean, I'd like to hear from students as well. I'd like to hear from the public. I'd like to hear from anybody who wants to tell me something, but, you know, hopefully we'll be able to get that done for May.
Thank you.
If not earlier.
When we had our hearings, I thought we had Mrs. Bingert in to speak.
Nope.
No?
No.
We had administrators from other school districts.
Other school districts, right.
And attorneys who make some of their living off of this subject.
But didn't we have?
Yeah.
Teachers or, we had coaches and from our district come in and speak also. I don't know if we, I thought we had Mrs. Bingert.
We didn't receive a considered recommendation from our top administrators on whether they would like to have it. We had, we received an offhand remark from the superintendent at that time. It was like, you know, not what I would consider a real considered, a real thawed-out recommendation, one way or the other, based on anything, just on how he woke up that morning. You know, whatever.
All right.
I'm happy to, I'm actually happy that we're going to have a recommendation from the administration.
Okay. Dr. Rosenberg?
Two things. At the Education Committee, I submitted a series of questions to the administration that I would like answered regarding random drug testing. I was told by the administration that they were pretty comprehensive, and that most of them, not all of them, most of them could be answered. If you're interested in seeing what those questions are, I think we could get them to you. The second thing is, I wanted to mention, and I can't mention it in public session, but there was some discussion at the, at the meeting of incidents that have been related to random drug testing that have been beneficial. That came from members of the administration. So I think it's important to hear from them, and some of it, to be quite frank, may have to be delivered in closed session because for you to understand the implications of what's happening, that may be necessary. So two things are going on in the Education Committee. We're identifying people who will speak to us, and we have a series of questions that we've asked the administration to answer.
Sounds good. Sounds fine to me. All right, any more questions on our committee reports? Mrs. Lay?
I have a question for the HR, Human Resources Committee. So when we talked about teacher evaluations, I've been doing some homework, and for the national core curriculum, it says that they're going to have a computer, is that me? Yeah. Computerized assessment system by 2014. So are we, is that something that we would anticipate being involved in?
We don't, we wouldn't really have a choice. If the state goes in that direction, we would have to do that, not just us, the whole state. Some districts are in a far more precarious position than we are to do that, and the logistics of that have not been worked out by the state yet. So we, it changes daily, almost daily, literally, so I'll keep everybody updated as we go along.
Yeah, I like to keep tabs on this.
I don't know if I'd count on the state or federal government getting their acts together to implement anything. I think what we've chosen to move forward with, coming up with an evaluation that is reasonable and comprehensive, I think, is the way to go.
Yeah, and I think.
With input from what's going to come down the pipe, too, but...
If I could, since Scott's not here, I think that Scott's feeling and the discussions we've had at the HR Committee over the last couple of months was that, given what we normally get from the state when they actually try to put the plan, a plan together for anything, that we should try to go forward and put together our own plan and potentially have a better option than what the state was going to do. And really, the report at our last meeting was more to the point that our expectation about how the state wasn't going to be very successful in what they were doing was holding true.
Right.
And that we should continue with our efforts, and Scott will continue to monitor what the state is doing. But their pilot program is not doing very well, and from what Scott was saying, it doesn't look like they're going to be done for this year, so...
Yeah, exactly.
And that, and so I think our goal had always been to try and not wait for the state to give us some, you know, whatever plan they give us, but to actually put together an intelligent plan, and, you know, so this is as much a status on where the state is and anything else. But, yeah, in the end, we may still be stuck with whatever the state or the federal government eventually puts together, but, you know, hopefully we could have something ourselves before then.
Right, right. That's what I was alluding to at the last meeting, is that if we have a very good assessment model, that they, the state might even be looking at our model to replicate. So it's just something, we should aim for that. And also, I thought we should be sensitive to the fact that we are implementing the Science and Math National Core Curriculum, and we've already written the curriculum for that. So the year that we implement, it could be like a transition year, so it's more difficult, right?
I'd like, just to clarify something. What you're taught, what Mr. Pulserfer is talking about is the teacher evaluation model, totally separate and apart from the state assessment model.
Oh, sorry.
Although connected in that the state assessments will have an impact on the teacher evaluation, but two totally separate things, okay? So I don't want people to get confused about that. That's where Scott comes in with the teacher evaluation model. The state assessment model is completely different. The state assessment model has to do with the state assessments, NJASK, growth models, things like that, which part of the teacher affected, teacher evaluation model will be based upon. However, your question was a little bit different. The Common Core standards, which are the national standards, are written for literacy and mathematics only, although they are, there is some cross-content integration within them, okay? So we have written the Mathematics K-12, which some of it has already been approved, the rest of it will be approved. Again, it's more reading and formatting. And we have also written Science, which is part of the New Jersey Core Curriculum Content Standards, okay? That has also been written and is currently being implemented, and you're approving it this evening. Everything else will be written this summer and will be approved for, will be approved, you know, hopefully at the end of the summer into the fall, early in the fall. Every other content area, including literacy. So that's where we are with that. So two, two separate things. Yes, they're connected in some way, or eventually will be connected, but your, I think your question was a little bit different to begin with, so I didn't want to confuse the two departments.
All right, anything else? All right, seeing nothing else, I think we're moving on to new business. New business from the public at this time, and then the board next. Those wishing to address the board can do so at this time. We typically won't address it now, but we might, if we can quickly. But we could also assign it to the administration, or board committee, or place it on a or board committee, or place it on a future work agenda. Any new business from the public? Name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Betsy Skeel, and I live at 567 Southwood Road. I'm a representative from the Hillsborough Robotics Team, and I would just kind of like to let you know some of our upcoming events. First of all, we have a Five Guys fundraiser tomorrow from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. Five Guys has graciously agreed to donate 15% of a person's purchase to the team if you just mention the high school robotics program. Also, we are co-hosting a science fair with the Somerset Library on March 8th for 5th to 8th graders, and anyone interested can sign up at the children's service desk at the library. We hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other new business from the public? And good luck with your season, by the way. All right, seeing none. Is any, any new business from the board? All right, then I have new business. Wow. So apparently, the county BA, business administrator, wants to have our tentative budget by the 6th of March. So that is next Tuesday. I'm not kidding. I, trust me, I would like us to be able to push back on this, but apparently they're, so this was sort of brought up, I don't know, I want to say the last minute, but just recently. They would like a tentative budget by next Tuesday. So we would like to propose having a board meeting on a week from today, on Monday, March 5th, okay, which we would then approve a tentative budget. Then the question becomes, we have a scheduled board meeting on the 12th and the 19th?
No.
26th.
26th.
The 12th and the 26th. Then the question becomes, do we keep the March 12th meeting, or do we skip it? My inclination is that, that this Monday, this is my own personal inclination, is that we hold the Monday meeting just for approving the tentative budget, and then we hold the other two meetings as, as scheduled, to get public input, because it's already on the calendar for public input and so forth. But I would, I would, I'm seeing a lot of nodding of heads. So if everybody's good with that, we'll move that direction. And then, Mr. Gillette, would you like to comment, please?
Oh, well, okay. Well, you get to hear me again tonight, because we had a bonus operations committee meeting. Bonus!
Extra sessions.
Two in one month. Extra spend. We had it just at 6:00 p.m. this evening, right across the hall here. And to, because we, so we added this meeting to try to get some issues out of the way with our, with the new timeline for the budget. As Dr. Paget indicated, this was just, we just found out about this Friday, late Friday afternoon, after 5:00 p.m., actually, I think, when, when our business administrators came back from the conference with the county, late, late that afternoon. So we went, we said, we're going to meet tonight to talk about a few things. And I guess the big thing on everyone's mind is, most of the people in the public will know that we did receive an increase in state aid, one, more than $1.6 million, 1.6 something, I forget that less digit, 1.672? Wow, that's a lot of digits. 1.672 million. We also had, received earlier this year, 1 million, 1 million in state aid, which we have not spent yet, which we're reserving to spend in this budget. So the items that we've been discussing, I'm going to throw it over to Dr. Schiff in just a second. So get ready, Dr. Schiff. So the items that we've been discussing are some of the broader issues. We also looked at the, at the particular items which we've been calling the high priority unbudgeted items. Up to this time, we've been dealing with preliminary budget based on receiving no increase in state aid. And we're able to fund a number of things, and initiatives, and, and projects, and all kinds of stuff. And we had high priority unbudgeted items. And every committee has a list of those. And we've also looked at all of the lists in the operations committee. So with an increase in state aid, we went back to the lists and looked at that. Also built into the preliminary budget was some tax relief, and operations committee is defining tax relief as going to the tax levy cap, and then back down from that number as tax relief. So the tax levy cap allows for a 2% increase, so whatever our tax levy is, 2% increase, and then any amount of money below that is what we're defining as tax relief. Now, from my own opinion, how I came up with that definition, why I chose that definition, for me, I don't know how other operations committee people feel about this, but I go with that definition because with our contracts and other expenditures in place that we have to have, we've thought long-term about those based on going to the 2% cap. So anytime we could come down from that, that's tax relief. So we've, we've talked about that. We, so we looked at the, the issues of the high priority unbudgeted items. We also looked at, in general terms, where we'd like to go with this, the 1 million, which we already had in the preliminary budget, and the 1.672 million additional. And we had some ideas about that. I'm going to throw it over to Dr. Schiff now, if you'd like to make a few comments.
Sure. I thought, I thought you, you, you shared that well. The, I think the challenge for the operations committee over the weekend is going to be to, to give the board the following Monday, kind of a balance between addressing the continuing needs of the district while providing property tax relief, and where that balance is. And I would encourage the board members, serve on each of the individual committees, that if you have strong feelings about the priorities, in particular, the unbudgeted, high priority items that, that you reviewed in committee, to please share it with, with Greg or other members of the operations committee, so that they're well-informed as we begin the process, so that we can provide to the full board on Monday, if not, if not sooner, over the weekend, with a, a tentative budget that, that is being recommended by the operations committee that does this balance between property tax relief and, and addressing the needs of our district.
Questions?
Or, is everybody okay, A, with a meeting this coming Monday, and then keeping the next two meetings? I, I think so. All right.
Should we make a motion to add the meeting?
Uh.
It would be better if we did.
Sure.
I'll make a motion to, to add a meeting on March 5th for the purpose of approving the tentative budget and any other thing that comes up in the superintendent needs to put on. Does that sound good, like a good motion?
Let's take a second.
Slightly vague. Second.
Do I need a, let's take a roll call. Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Kent?
Yes.
Mrs. Lay?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Paget?
Yes. The motion passes.
It's good to do it that way.
Took your fun away. All right, so that's settled. And then, the operation committee meets this Saturday to sift through everything, and we get things back out to you guys, and then we go through it on Monday. All right? So then, yes, ma'am?
What are we doing to inform the public about the contents of the current budget?
I don't know if we have a convention we pass the tentative.
I can certainly share with you what, what my process will be. Once we have a, a budget that the, that the board is comfortable with, then I'm going to do the same type of things I did last year, which was to go to each of the elementary schools, the middle school, the intermediate school, and the high school, and make presentations to the parent group, as well as to our, to our teachers. I'll also reach out to our senior community and do a presentation to them. Our township committee was kind enough to allow me some time at one of their regular meetings to do so. We have the CPN meeting that's, that's scheduled, where I'll present the, a summary of the budget. And there may be a few other things that, that I do, they just don't come to mind. But there's a, a great deal of outreach that, that I try to do once the board has, has fixed the tentative budget. And then we have a few months until we hit the, the final budget, and that also gives me some time. Well, we, I'm sorry, I have a few weeks before the, before that last meeting in, in March, where we strike the final budget, and then even more outreach to the community to help them understand. We'll, we'll do press releases, we'll work with, with our local press to make sure that all of their questions are answered, and they get the information out.
So there won't be any information to the public before next Monday?
Well, we, we don't, we don't have, other than the information that we discussed here, what the, what the tax relief is going to look like, and what our expenditure side is going to be at this point. So once we have, once we have that recommendation from the operations committee coming out for the tentative budget, then we'll have the information. We can talk about the tax rate, we can talk about the impact to the, to the average homeowner, you know, those type of questions. We can't, we can't do that unless we know what, what the tax rate is going to be at that point. And we could talk about scenarios, but we wouldn't know what it is.
What does the final budget do?
Final budget is due on the 26th, is it?
That's our meeting day.
It could be a couple of days after that.
29th.
29th, 29th.
So we have the time for two meetings between?
We'll have, we'll have the meeting on Monday, and then we'll have two additional board meetings.
No, between the tentative and the final.
Oh, between the tentative and the budget. Right, that's correct.
And I will comment that we are opening up, the next item, I believe, is input on the budget. So this allows the public to come out, and, and while I'm not going to float every item that, that the board is considering, it would, that would be a bit of a mess. But if people have things that they think should be put into the budget, they need to come out and tell us. Or if they think that things shouldn't be in the budget, they can tell us that, too.
I do, I also just want to comment on Judy's frustration, a frustration that I share, too, that there is always this accelerated process, because we do not get a significant revenue figure from the state until very late in the process. So our state aid, which, which is approximately, you know, about a third, less than a third of our total revenue picture, we didn't receive until after 4:30 on Thursday of this past week. So without that significant part of, of the revenue picture, it's, it's hard to talk intelligently about the expenditure side either. So once, once we know what our revenues are, and we can talk intelligently about, about the expenditure side, I think we'll be providing our community with, with accurate information. The frustration is, we get so, we get a large chunk of our revenue so late in the process. We don't know what it, what it is until, until very late.
The choice, you could be Montgomery and not get any. Dr. Rosenberg?
I think part of the problem is, if I recall in previous years, if you backtrack from the final budget approval, the tentative budget was usually approved maybe one or two weeks before the final budget. The crunch was between the tentative budget, excuse me, and the final budget. Now, because of this very, very early due date for the tentative budget, the window between the tentative budget and the final budget is much bigger. It's almost three weeks.
More.
And it was not that way in the past. So in terms of informing the public about what's going on, I think Dr. Schiff is right. There's not enough time to create any cohesive presentation between last Thursday and tonight, or even, even, even next Monday. But there will be more time between the tentative budget and the final budget to do it. So I think this March 6th date has really changed, is really significantly different from past years. And that's why we don't have anything to present to the public just yet.
Sure.
The combination of the March 6th date and the, and the Thursday notification of our revenue creates no time to put anything together. But after, after next Monday's meeting, we certainly will have a presentation for the public, as I understand it. So next, next Monday.
So the, on the minus side, we have to rush to get it ready this Monday. On the plus side, more time to think about it in between, to the final. So there you go. All right. Any other new business from the board? Mrs. Lay?
I found this information about digital literacy so, so interesting. I wanted to share it with you. So our, overall, across the country, we've been reducing the number of classes in computer literacy or programming. And, and actually, it's causing a need for, for these positions in, in the business world. And, and one way to understand that is that for programmers, the, the unemployment rate is at 3% versus the, the national unemployment rate. And the, the countries that are doing well in, in computer literacy are the same ones that are doing very well in education overall, like South Korea and Australia. And one thing that is, is very compelling is that the smartphone industry created 466,000 jobs, or, and generated $20 billion in 2011 alone. So I think that's something we should think about for our students. And, and it's something that, it's part of their world. So they, I'm sure they would be engaged in, in programming. So I, I'd like us to think about that.
Thank you. All right, seeing, seeing no new business, I think we're ready to move on to public input on the 2012, 2013 budget. So people at this time can give their input for the next, apparently, three weeks. Well, no, not in succession, I guess. 5th, the 12th, and then the 26th. So seeing no input, we're going to move on to the action agenda. If the public would like to comment on the action agenda, I will do, let them do so at this time. If the, I'll let the board do their commenting during the action agenda. All right. Seeing nothing from the public, we're going to move on to the action agenda. Dr. Schiff?
Thank you. I ask for the board's consideration for the following action items under the education section of the board agenda, to approve the motions for professional travel and related expenses, approve the HIP investigation list, approve the curriculum as listed, approve overnight trips, field trips, and textbooks, and the novel as listed.
Mrs. Haas, would you like to make that motion?
I very much would like to make that motion on behalf of the education committee.
Thank you. And I need a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Mrs. Haley?
Thank you. I just have a quick question on A7. I'm just noticing the, the novel that we're going to approve, Silent Spring. I just noticed that it's 10, 10 years old, and also did a little bit of research, and somewhat controversial, depending on what side of the fence you sit on. So I was just curious as to what the thought process was to move along with that.
Well, Silent Spring is a classic environmental book, which actually came out when I went to school. And it's actually the 50th anniversary of the book this year. And the curriculum experts in our, in, in our district felt that it would be good to revisit the book and see where we've come since then. And this is clearly not the only item on, you know, that class's agenda. But it is, from a historical, you know, perspective, it's very interesting to see the impact that that book had, besides the information in the book, what it created in terms of an environmental movement, so.
It's just always difficult to judge when you're just looking at something on black and white, as how it's going to fit into the curriculum. So I appreciate the explanation.
Mr. Gillette?
Is it for a particular class, a particular science class, or we're just approving it as, use as they see fit?
12th grade science.
Well.
It's in the bar.
Environmental science?
All right.
We're all feeling a little bit, yeah.
All right. Seeing no further comment, roll call, Mr. Mahmood?
Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Kent?
Yes.
Mrs. Lay?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Paget?
Yes.
I'm recommending the following motions for consideration under the area of human resources, to rescind the positions for the three RTI teachers that were formerly funded by EdJobs. And the next resolution is to approve seven academic support teachers, again, funded by the EdJobs grant, approve resignations and, and retirements as listed, approve the leaves as listed, contract changes, transfers, change of appointments, and the appointments of teachers, long-term substitutes, maintenance intramural advisors, homework help center, substitutes, and group changes.
All right. Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes, on behalf of the Human Resources Committee, so moved.
And a second, please?
Just a second.
All right. Any discussion on those items? Mrs. Haas? Um, Mrs. Haas?
Yeah, I, I'd like to understand better the response to intervention swap out for existing academic support instructor positions, uh, going from part-time to full-time or whatever. But especially as it relates to the EdJobs money, that money needs to be spent by the end of this year. And, uh, also in keeping, now that I remember, with the budget discussion, um, with all the additional state aid that we've gotten, I hope everybody keeps in mind that we'll also be losing nine hundred thousand dollars worth of EdJobs funding. That's in this year's budget, not next year's budget, but that's just an aside. Anyway, this year, I would like to make sure that every single last dime of those wonderful federal funds are spent. So, can somebody please explain to me how that's gonna happen?
Dr. Antunes?
Given that it's March this week.
Well, I can speak to the, uh, RTI teachers. Uh, we did interview many teachers for that position and what we concluded, the interview consisted of myself, Mr. Rocco, and Mrs. Johnston. Nobody we interviewed really understood what RTI was. And so, therefore, we couldn't put the, you know, they, they, there was no fit for the position, no matter how we explained it, how, there was just no fit for the position. So...
Sorry to hear that.
Yeah, well, we were very surprised to hear that ourselves, to be honest with you. And so, as a result of that, we didn't wanna just hire somebody for those positions if they weren't going to do what we needed them to do. And upon further discussion, um, Mr. Rocco and the HR Committee went forward with the, the, what you see there. I can't speak to the other stuff, though. I do know that the money is being utilized, though. But I can't speak to where we are at that because I'm not, I wasn't a part of that. But that's the swap out for the RTI teachers. That I can explain.
I understand that, but I, I'm not really clear, I'm not really clear on how academic support instructors replace that need.
They don't. They're just using the money.
Oh, it's just a separate...
Right. Yeah. Okay.
We're trying to do your second thing, use off all the money.
Uh, Mr. Kint?
Now that you brought up the RTI, um, question, I was, I was actually gonna ask that, 'cause the res- resolution that we had was for the positions, there was a, a need. And, um, so, in the resolution, it says, "Due to lack of qualified applicants." So, is the need still there? And we're just not able to satisfy that need?
Response to intervention is really a process. It's not, it's not a program, it's not a specific type of teacher. It's more of a process. And in fact, the ASI placement is, could actually be considered part of a response to intervention. We're trying to intervene with a student's weakness prior to it getting so grand. So, we, we continue to have students with gaps and with weaknesses in their, in their schools. So, ASI teachers do assist in that. So, RTI is more, is, is more of a process to get students through. There is no, there's no real position called RTI teacher. We were calling it that for our own differentiation of what the position was going to be for.
Okay. And I guess, I guess with the positions, it goes back to the, the other conversations that we had, and actually, Mr. Pulsifer brought it up, but so, when we had the resolutions to create the position, it wasn't a, it wasn't a vote to either fund it or to staff it, it was just to, to create the position. So, we could choose to leave the positions open and fill it up whenever we choose to, but in this case, we're deciding to rescind that. Basically, we're saying we don't need those positions in this, in this description.
So, so are we losing the money? That, no, you're just shifting it somewhere else.
All right. Any further questions? All right. Seeing none?
I have a, a question, um, for item...
Where, where?
Item B seven. Uh, there's one, uh, in maintenance, there's an asterisk, there's a denotation for that. That person, is there a particular, um, notification or notice that needs to be made?
Why is he specialized in asterisks?
Yeah, it's either, it's either the, um, they have to go through the fingerprinting process and, um, until they have the fingerprinting process complete, we put it on as an asterisk, we get them approved, we get them processed, and then, once they're cleared through criminal history, then they can work.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right. Mrs. Haas?
Sorry. Um, could I have some clarification about the intramural advisor positions and why are they being paid at an hourly rate? And I would also like to, I mean, do you wanna talk about the homework help center?
I can't speak to it. I apologize.
It's on the calendar, it's not a secret.
Sure. These, um... In terms of the hourly rate versus, versus a stipend?
Yeah.
And Javila?
I'd have to discuss that with, um, with Mr. Rocco and most of the, actually, all of these are through the IDEAA federal grant, not through local funds. But if you, um, if you'd like, we can pull it off, we can wait until March fifth to do it. However, we did wish to, to begin the process on March first. What I can do is provide the board with, with more clarity as to, as to why, if you wanna vote for it, and then we can, we can do it that way.
Can we go that way? We can, we can get clarity on why it's listed that way, and we can vote on it tonight.
I don't wanna delay, I don't wanna delay it, I just don't wanna start a new type of procedure for these positions.
I also would like clarification on the maximum number of hours that these advisors would have, 'cause that's not listed right now. Thank you.
All right. Uh, I think we're ready for a roll call, Mr. Mahmood?
Sure.
Do you wanna talk about the homework help center?
Oh. Lisa, do you wanna talk about the homework?
These were, these were similar positions to what we were talking about before. These were EdJob funds. The way that we worked this was to calculate that we would spend all of the EdJobs fund. As Lisa indicated before, there was difficulty in finding RTI teachers. We are optimistic that by just using our regular ASI criteria, that we'll be able to find the seven positions that are, that are listed there, at least from now until the end of the school year. These before and after-school homework help centers were ideas, um, that our principals and, and Mr. Rocco worked together to try to say, "Well, we have these monies, they're for, they're for a year, where do you think you would, um, best see the benefit?" And, uh, the recommendations were, were here as listed at the middle school for the homework help.
Okay.
Um, Dr. Rosenberg?
I, I guess there's, I'm hoping there's a reason. I, I just don't understand the hourly rates. How does an, an intramural advisor get paid sixty dollars, almost sixty dollars an hour, and a tutor almost forty dollars an hour? I mean, is, maybe I'm missing something here.
I don't believe that these are, that these are that much different than what we had before, but I'll, I'll take a look and I'll report back to the board on it.
And I'll, I'll put in now that if, if you guys have questions on the agenda in general, if, if you get an email out to, uh, people, we can have the answer by the board meeting and not, and not be stumped at this point. Um, we are doubly stumped because, uh, Mr. Rocco is ill this evening and is not at the meeting. All right. I think we're ready for a roll call, Mr. Mahmood?
Sure. Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Mr. July?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Kint?
Yes.
Mrs. Lay?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Padgett?
Yes.
Thank you. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the operations agenda. Um, approving the financials, the bills list, line item transfers, the lease purchase agreement, the joint transportation agreement, and, um, awarding the transportation contracts as listed, and approving the annual school election calendar.
Uh, Mr. July?
Yes, on behalf of, what am I, what am I supposed to say? On behalf of the Operations Committee, I hereby certify that I make this motion to put this forward. So moved.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All right. Um, any discussion on these items? Uh, Mr. Kint?
Oh, sir. On, um, on item C four, the leasing for the, for the, uh, laptop, PCs, tablets, um, can we move that to next week, since that, that way it can be incorporated in with the preliminary budget? So, that way, we can see how well it fits. Right now, you're asking us to make a, a, a large commitment before we, before we even see the preliminary budget.
If that's the will of the board, we're more than happy to do so. I have a question.
Mr. July?
Yeah, I'll speak to that. Well, um, I've, I spoke with Dr. Schiff a couple of times over the past day or two about this issue, trying to understand exactly what we're proving here, how the lease works. Uh, we had bids for the, um, uh, the financial aspect of it, but there's also, you know, the price of the laptop slash tablets and the other items. Um, and, and as part of our discussion, as we were talking about, um, Dr. Schiff's impression was that if we had, and it was also my, I shared this impression also, if we came in with good state aid numbers, we were pretty sure to do this. We weren't gonna hold it up here. I think that we thought about that. But we also did say, I think that Mr. Kint was referring to, that we weren't going to approve this until we saw the budget, which I take to mean maybe the same night we approved the tentative budget. Uh, and I think Mr. Kint is correct that this is, um, something that's not gonna be just in the twenty twelve, twenty thirteen budget, but in the next four budgets. Um, so I think we need to, I, I would be okay with, with holding it till March fifth, but I don't know, I, I don't know if, um, if that ru- ruins anything with the lease, if there's any problem, maybe Mr. Mahmood knows, if there's, uh, Dr. Schiff knows, or...
Yes, we do have some professionals who, who are in the audience who may be available, who are available to the board for their questions. And, Mr. Mahmood, would you mind introducing it?
Sure, I'll, uh, you all know Mr. Joel Handler? How are you, Joel? And we also have, uh, Mr. Dennis Balladis, who's, um, our financial advisor from the Middlesex Regional Educational Services Commission. And Dennis was, um, very grateful for us in getting the bid out in a very quick turnaround. So, I don't know, Dennis, if you wanna comment on a delay on the leasing side, if the board does not, uh, wish to go out to, uh, to approve this tonight.
Thank you. Um, from the leasing aspect, the apparent little bidder is JP Morgan Chase. They agreed to hold the funding till April first and then change, then possibly in debt rates. But the way the rates are moving right now, there isn't much movement, so I think you were in good stead. Um, we anticipated, not knowing exactly when this would pass, we used everything as an approximation. So, you have some, you, you do have the leeway. I've notified JP Morgan Chase, put them on notice to begin the documentation process pending formal approval by the board, after recruit, after, uh, approval of your, your board council.
Before you sit, can you talk a little bit about the interest and, and the competitiveness of the bidding process?
Under five minutes.
This, I've been doing lease purchase bidding for the past twenty years, as in my own business, and for the past two years with the Middlesex Regional Ed Services Commission. I liken the bid that we ran for your school district as to Michael Phelps not only breaking an Olympic swimming record, but a world record. We had, and this has been, you know, I've been in finance for years, um, the last couple of years have been very, very bad on the banking industry. Competition was, we were deth to get bidders. With your bid, we had eight responsive and responsible bidders. One showed up late, we didn't count them, it would've been nine. Of the bidders that we got, six of the eight were below two percent. The winning interest rate was one point four six percent. It's basically free money, if you look at it in today's, at day and age. It's likened to the cred- the creditworthiness of the asset you're putting out, the creditworthiness of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education. I did a bid this past week, we're South Jersey School District Four, some modifications to a building. I was only able to get two bidders, and the bid was at two point three nine percent for the same time. So, I'm very proud of this bid. This is a very good bid and reflecting on what you're doing, and also that the financial community embraces what you're doing with this project.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. July?
I, this might be for Joel, but, Joel, go up to the, go up there to the podium, Joel, Mr. Handler. So, I understand that, that we, we had the bid out there, we got a great price on the interest rate. Where do we find the price for the actual items? Is that bid also? And, and where are those bids? And how do we know that that was a good price? And, please don't tell me it's all tied up within the same lease whole bundle with the interest, because then that interest rate means nothing. So, go ahead.
Um, so, as I discussed the last time, we had gone out, looked at different equipment over the past several months, and we've evaluated different models, looking for the best model out there, um, that would meet our needs, uh, you know, working with other districts that have implemented these kind of programs and so forth. Um, the product that we found that really worked well was that Lenovo tablet. I believe many of you have seen it.
It's a laptop, by the way. To be clear, it's a laptop...
Yes.
With a tablet capabilities. Thank you.
It's a convert, you know, there's lots of names for it. There's convertible tablet, there's Windows tablet, there's, uh, you know, laptop convertible screen. Um, but yeah, it is, it is in essence a laptop where you can flip the screen down, allowing the staff member to actually use it with a pen, use it with their finger, be able to be wirelessly mobile in the classroom. Uh, but coming back to your question, so, the initial, um, what we initially did was looked at, you know, what kind of agreements are out there, where that, we can purchase under the WISC contract, which is the multi-state consortium. Uh, we purchased, uh, technology under, in the past, which is a very highly competitive, um, uh, bidding, bid process that they do to establish pricing. Uh, from that, what the WISC does is allow you to, um, they set a, a price, that this is what the product sold for. However, in larger quantities, that pricing can be reduced. Um, the pricing that we got, and that was, it's, uh, I, I, if I remember off the top of my head, the unit itself started at about sixteen hundred was the list price under WISC. They're down to a thousand dollars per unit, knowing the quantities that we're dealing with. So...
Okay, so, so, when, when I'm reading, um, the memo that was sent to Mr. Mahmood, um, that details some of this, um, what, that, the one point four one seven million dollars, that's the amount that we're borrowing, more or less. That, that's the amount that the interest rate is calculated, for, we're borrowing that, and that's the, okay. That includes everything you want, including the bandwidth upgrade and the whole thing? Include, let me clarify, that's how much we have to borrow for that. There's some in this current year's budget, north of three hundred thousand dollars, that we have left from, um, another earlier project, uh, projectors and things. So, that added to the one point four million is the total package price for not only the laptop, touchscreen laptops, I'm gonna call them, touchscreen laptops. Not only that, but also upgrades to the Wi-Fi bandwidth and other things you need to do to make, make it all work. Is that correct?
That is correct.
No more questions for this witness.
Thank you. Mr. Kint?
Yeah, so, I, the, the financing deal, that, the bid that we got, is, I haven't, I was surprised, pleasantly surprised, there's just a question I have, is, we have a lot of priorities. Um, you know, we've got curriculum writing, basically, for almost the entire curriculum minus the, the math of what's been approved this year, so that's, that's significantly more. The EdJobs grant is, is ending. There have been a number of positions that we've approved this year, hired on at least a, a temporary basis, for those that are being funded through that. So, we gotta look at that. Uh, and so, I just would like to see it all together, as opposed to picking up a specific priority a week before we're gonna get the preliminary budget.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Pulsifer?
I, I hate to be picky, but can we get a clarification on the actual number in this memorandum? Because the number here is, and I'm just gonna read it syntactically, one, comma, four one seven, comma, one five, point six eight. I think we're missing a number, and I'm hoping it's just a number in that last, in the hundreds area, maybe?
Two fives together, should be two fives.
Two fives together, should be two fives together, in the memo it has it, correct?
155?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Haley?
I just wanted, Chris and Mr. Kinst kind of touched on everything, and Mr. Gillette too, but, so we're really looking at almost 1.8 total.
1.7 something.
1.7 something, overall, correct?
Over?
Over the four years.
Four years.
I just, I, because, you know, public sees the agenda and the attachments as written 1.417, but it's really 1.7 and change, correct? And I think, you know, I think we are doing the right thing by, you know, removing this item for this week, and having the chance over the weekend to go over and make the proposal for the tentative budget, I think that's the right thing to do, is to wait till Monday.
I'm good with that. If Mr., unless Mr. Handler has a compelling reason why a week would change things?
The only, the only issue with delaying the bid is, we are, we were looking to try to pilot this in two of the elementary schools, starting in early April, as early as possible. The longer we delay, you know, if, if we do delay, and we do push it back another week, it probably would push back the pilot to launching even later, and it might push it back to a point where it's so close to the end of school, it may not be plausible. I, you know, I don't want to speak to it, because I really haven't sat down to see when the equipment would come in and so forth. That's, that's, I, you know, in terms of answering that question.
You didn't make it any easier.
Thanks a lot.
Thanks.
Dr. Rosenberg?
Just one more question from Mr. Handler. We're talking about 1.7 million dollars and change for this, but as I recall, and I, you may have said this before, but I just want it clear in everybody's minds, including the public, these laptops will create a situation where the desktops that already exist in the classrooms will not have to be replaced, and they are due to be replaced. So the difference between replacing the desktops and replacing the laptops, the difference between those two strategies, is approximately how much?
About half over the next four years.
About a half a million dollars.
One other thing to keep in mind is, most of the desktops are obsolete now.
I understand that. So if we had to replace the desktops, if we didn't replace the laptops, we would have to replace the desktops. So, one way or the other, we were going to make an expenditure on technology, so this is certainly more, but it, I think it's probably a little misleading to talk about 1.7 million, because we would've had to replace the desktops, is that right?
That is correct.
Over four years. 1.7, over four years. Mr. Gillette?
Yeah, and I, not arguing with you at all, Dr. Rosenberg, I don't want to do that the next four weeks, but.
Time is running out.
You know, because, make it, make it nice, pleasant four weeks. But if it was, if we were just going to make an expenditure and replace the desktops for, you know, July 1st or September 1st, we'd do it in the budget, we'd wait till we have the budget, and do it, so.
I don't have a problem with postponing it.
Oh, okay, all right.
I don't have a problem with postponing it, I just wanted to make sure that we understood what the real diff, delta is on the cost.
Well, let's just postpone it.
All right. A week then, we'll see you in a week. So we're pulling. What's that? I, I, I guess I ask your permission.
Yeah.
As the author of the motion, we can pull the C4.
Yes. Pull that out till next week.
All right. Is there any other questions over other things? Dr. Rosenberg?
This is a surprise to me, maybe I should know it, but do we really have polling places in ShopRite and Stop &amp; Shop?
They're not polling places?
They just notifications?
Notification sites.
Notification sites.
Like the general poll board.
Thank you.
You have to take a number at the deli, Dr. Rosenberg.
You know, and I, I read that very quickly too, I'm like, really? We could go, because other places do have polling in the grocery store, other states.
Free pound of ham for every voter.
I'm not so sure it's a bad idea.
If we want to get out of the school, it'd be an option.
If it gets the turnout up, what the heck?
That would help that bagger, that one that won your.
All right, any other questions?
You remember, who was that?
Under C. All right, seeing none, roll call, Mr. Mahmood.
Ms. Bogachewski?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Kinst?
Yes.
Mrs. Lay? Mr. Pulsofer?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes. All right, that concludes the action agenda. C4? We did. All right, do you, we, we have to do that?
Yeah, we have to postpone, so it comes back at the next meeting.
All right, so we're going to, do, do we need a roll call for that, or just a no? All right, so, I need a motion to postpone the C4 vote.
Oh.
To next Monday. So I'll take that motion.
Yeah, I'll, I, I move that.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, roll call, Mr. Mahmood?
Ms. Bogachewski?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Kinst?
Yeah.
Mrs. Lay?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsofer?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes. So moved. All right, now that concludes our action agenda. That's okay. And we're going to move on to old business, if there's any old business from the public.
Mrs. Valano?
We'll go to you guys first, and then to the board. Once again, those wishing to address the board about old business can do so at this time, and we can put it on a future agenda, or refer to a committee, or to the administration. Name an address, please.
Hi, Kelly Valano, 87 Meadowbrook, and sixth grade teacher. I just wanted to report back to the board that Teacher for a Day was a huge success last Friday, and thank you to Judy Haas for stepping up for a second year in the row, in a row to represent the board. We will be sure to come and invite you next year, in person, the month before. Have a great day.
Thank you. Any other old business from the public? All right, seeing none, any old business from the board? Mr. Gillette?
Yes, I just wanted to report to Mrs. Haas that we did review the bills this month, as stated in her thing, and we did, I did talk to Dr. Schiff about the item that you mentioned at the last meeting, that we didn't mention to the public, because it was confidential matter, and it's, as I think Dr. Schiff also may have spoken to you about it also, and it's all taken care of, and it won't happen again, et cetera, et cetera, okay?
No, I, I did notice the change this month, and that's why I didn't object, but I'm very pleased that that's being done correctly now.
Mrs. Haley?
And I'm very sorry, but I think this may have been under new business, but I know that we, as a board, have talked, both, I think publicly and offline, about potentially looking to move the polling site for the election from HES to another location, just because of the overcrowding and parking issues that we always seem to face, so I was wondering if we've talked to anybody about doing that. Yes. I'm talking about the school board and, and the November elections specifically, really.
November's in the school, so they have the.
Well, even, even though school is closed, it still does become an issue, especially in a presidential year, you know, it, it really is a problem.
So let's see if I can remember, we, I don't know if we have a choice on, like it's determined by the clerk, or the clerk of elections, what we could do is give the clerk feedback, and say, it's a really bad place, can you, can you find somewhere else? We could wrap that all into the discussion about, you know, the whole November week is, is precipitated by the fact that we take Tuesday off. So if we would like to move towards moving elections out of the schools and having school that day, then we should have that discussion.
You know, I just know that it always becomes, we get a lot of feedback from the community that it's always just an uncomfortable place, maneuvering in and out, and, you know, especially when we do have school, but, you know, I'm, I'm just making my voice heard on this, because I do receive feedback about it, and other board members have also talked about it, so I don't, I don't think I'm the only one.
They haven't gotten angry enough to email us.
That is true, that is true, Dr. Page.
Oh, no. Now I get more email. Mrs. Bogachewski?
Yes, I just wanted to say that this past Thursday, Woods Road School had their annual science fair, and it was a true success, and I just wanted to say thank you to all those parents that helped out, and pretty much probably did 80% of the projects.
No, no.
The children did, I mean, obviously.
They love their kids, say, they love their kids.
Yes, and I definitely see some potential new Einstein members and robo raiders, so it was, it was quite exciting to see that.
For the election places, do, want to put that to operations, maybe?
Because we don't have enough to talk about Saturday?
How about our township committee liaison? To start there.
What's that?
How about our township committee liaison? To contact the clerk.
Is it a township issue?
No, but it could tell the clerk. It's a county issue, I think.
And, and maybe Ayman could give the clerk a call and see what's up, if that's a. Yeah, yeah, okay.
I would suggest that that would need to be done quickly, because the election is coming up quickly.
I don't think we're going to get a change for this one. I'm, I'm talking, I, I, you know, I never expect government to work that fast. But, but I do, I do definitely believe that if you want something changed for next year, you start in a year. Dr. Rosenberg?
Two things. Two Fri-, last Friday, Dr. Schiff, you were there, and, and Dr. Page, you were there, I went to a concert at Rutgers.
Oh, right. The Wind Ensemble.
The, Mr. Pulsofer was there, and Mrs. Lay was there, and the Wind Ensemble was chosen, one of six high school ensembles in the entire state, to play at this conference. It was competitive, and we sat there, and the Hillsborough High School Wind Ensemble, I, I don't think anybody will say anything different, just took our breath away. The music, all the ensembles were, were great, but Hillsborough's music was more difficult, and it was just superb. We were stunned, there was a standing ovation that didn't stop, it was an incredible experience. We have one of the finest instrumental music programs in the state, and we should feel very proud of it. The other. The other comment I would like to make is to congratulate the district, we now have not only a YouTube channel, but a Facebook page, and a Twitter feed, that I believe is now live, is that correct? And hopefully, the community will participate, another way to get information out to the community in, in this social media era, and it's good to know that we're, we're modeling the way a lot of people communicate out there, so, not only do you have a website now, but you have all kinds of ways to contact the board, I would encourage the community to use them.
And you are immortalized on YouTube.
That's right, forever.
And we apologize to the rest of the world for that, yes.
And, and you can watch the entire board meeting on YouTube now, so if you don't get Channel 14, which means you're not seeing this, but, the point is, you can watch the entire board meeting on YouTube, you can pause it, you can rewind it, you can watch it as many times as you want, whenever you want.
Boy, turn it on, all right. Any other old business? Mr. Pulsofer?
I, I'm only going to correct Mr. Rosenberg, because it actually makes us look even better. I believe this competition is actually a mid-Atlantic competition, and not a New Jersey competition, because there was, because there was at least one band from New York. But I believe it's approximately 380 bands in the, in the eight-state mid-Atlantic region, who felt they were good enough to try to get into the competition, of which we were one of the top six, so it's actually even more impressive than, than the original.
And your son was playing in the, in the ensemble?
Yes, he was.
All right, any other old business? Seeing none, I need a motion to adjourn? So moved. And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed and abstentions, we are adjourned, and we'll see you next week.